...is going to give the board a comprehensive review of the strategic plan as it stands today. Although, brief.
A comprehensive, brief one.
I'm gonna try to condense as much as possible and then leave it open for questioning as much as you can. This is a 72-page document, so if we go through it line item by line item, we would be here into tomorrow.
So, let me just remind some folks of some procedural stuff, John.
Sure.
So this is, it's our board work session and we do encourage comment and questions from the audience, from the public, but just so that everyone knows, the board has priority. If you wish to speak or have comment, please do so by raising your hand. And I will either call on you or Mr. Blackman. Like I say, it's a lot more informal than our regular meetings. But at that, I think we all understand. And, John, it's all yours.
Okay. So, as you know, several years ago, we developed the strategic plan and involved a lot of different factions of the community. It's a very long list, the senior strategic plan, that's 17 pages of people that were involved in those planning committees. And from that came 10 goals. And the way to look at this is our strategic plan is really our road, our map of where we want to go. The places we want to take the district in a larger picture. Then we have the district improvement plan, which is called the Y-S tool. The improvement plan is directly aligned to the strategic plan. So the strategic plan is really the map. And if you will, the improvement plan for the district is our compass to keep us heading and focused in the right direction on that map towards these strategic plan goals. And then from there, it goes down to the building level and their improvement plans, which are also in the Y-S tool. And just so you know, this is the first year where we've required all our schools to do an improvement planning, whether they're in improvement or not. So all our schools will be developing their Y-S tools. For example, Haley's never done one, but they're gonna be doing one this year to really communicate and align to a strategic plan and the district plan of improvement. So that we vertically align everything, if you will, similar to curriculum. So that the buildings are aligned to the district and districts aligned directly to the strategic plan. So that everything's moving towards this map. Okay, so with that, in each one of these goals, in the packets that you were given, there's a list of things that have been done over the years by date and they're color-coded in here. So as you look at this, by dates, you can see from 2009 to 2010, these were some of the undertakings with math, with the Math Initiative, under Goal One. So with the goals, Goal One is that the Blaine County School District, 21st Century Student Performance Indicators to ensure preparedness for college and career and citizenship. So that's Goal One. And these are some of the things that have been done in the past. And in the blue, you'll see what is currently underway, it just keeps going down. In the blue are some of the things that were reported out by each building. Now, one thing to keep in mind is that this is what was reported to us from the buildings. Some of the things are going on district-wide. I got the mic. So some of these things are done district-wide even though some buildings didn't necessarily report them directly to us. For example, you know, in one of the reports, I was looking at the fact that, you know, we're doing pre-kindergarten, which is not, you know, funded by the state and so forth, but it has to do with early child readiness. And so, all of our schools have that, you know, so, but not all of them reported it. Nearly all staff have completed MTI at Haley, for example. I know that the staff completed that at the high school. That was started back when I was still the principal, so... Just because these are reported at these specific buildings doesn't mean that they're going on district-wide. And this is a living, breathing document that we are updating constantly, all the time. So it is an ever-changing thing and it's always in flux as we're moving towards those goals.
Is there, John, may I?
Mm-hmm.
So, maybe I'm skipping ahead, but, so I'm looking at 21st Century Skills, Goal Number One here.
Mm-hmm.
And is there, is there a highlighted section that indicates what is left? In order to...
From the suggested, from the suggested criteria? So if you go, let's go back to, do they have the suggested criteria on here?
What do you mean by suggested criteria?
Well, there were some suggestions of breakout goals from the main goal. So they were...
Strategies, you mean?
Strategies, exactly, strategies. So, different strategies that have been implemented under each one of these goals. So these are, so these are some of the, this is a breakdown basically of some of the categories and indicators. So under performance indicators for 21st Century Skills, the things that we're looking for to prepare for college and career, could be a critical thinker, problem solver, information and media literate, an effective communicator and innovator. Those are kind of broad-range, 30,000-foot view things. They're not, they're not, the granular things, they're not the smaller, more specific things. That's that 30,000-foot view or the map view, if you will. And then, and then we get into, as you look at the plan in those colored areas, you actually get into more of the specific things that have been done and that continue to be done.
So, so John?
Yes.
So what Steve was asking, are, I mean, I've got a kind of an old strategic plan here, but in this color-coded thing, are there strategies on there, stuff that's been left that hasn't been done yet? Is that...
Yes, I mean, there are still things that we're working towards now.
Right, but are they in this document, I guess?
Are they identified by omission or...
Well, I think they're in the black area. So if you look at the black area right there where it says Idaho Math Initiative, Best Practices Continued, that's one of the strategies, so the MTI is a strategy. The things that have been done towards that strategy are down below that. So if you continue down, there'll be another black, Middle Years International Baccalaureate Program is under the same heading as a strategy. So Strategy 1.2 is Middle Years International Baccalaureate Program, under Goal One. And then the specifics are underneath that. Does that answer your question?
Sure.
Yes. Heather?
So, just to get back to that, there is not a clear area, a colored area with remaining strategies left. That's a great idea, we're happy to go back. We would have to go back to each of those goal committees and see what's left. But I think it can be done with some research.
Okay, thanks, Heather.
But if, under each one of those, the strategies are listed. There's 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4, 1.5. Those are all those strategies under that Goal One.
Right.
And then these are the specifics, the footsteps, if you will, underneath each one of those directions or focuses. So again, you've got the strategic plan goal, then you've got the focus underneath that goal, and then you have the actual granular things that are happening and the steps that are taking down those paths towards that destination, so... The blue is the most recent. But like I said, this is a living, breathing document, these things are ongoing. A lot of these goals are pretty relevant at any time that you approach them. So, you know, we go through this process about every, you know, eight to 10 years. So one of the things that, you know, we're getting to that point where we may want to refocus the community on, you know, what is, what are the current concerns? What are, you know, what are some of the things that we want to look at moving forward? You know, whenever you're, whenever you're moving towards goals, you want to consistently assess what you've done, monitor that, make the adjustments that you need to make as you're moving forward. And that's, that's the whole purpose of redoing strategic plans within a timeframe, just to always go back, reassess the strategic plan that you just finished, what things are still relevant, what things need to change, where are we moving? 21st Century Skills was, you know, a big thing on the table back when we started this. We're, you know, more than a tenth of the way into the 21st century. And a lot of these things are still very relevant. But some, some things we may feel that we've taken care of, other directions we may want to move further.
Paul?
Just a point, that page numbers on this do not correspond with the page numbers we got on our packet and Dropbox. And there are no page numbers in this. And just jumping back and forth between the two, I mean, if I'm following this and then I want to reference this, I just can't go right to it, I've got it, because they're not, those numbers do not correspond with the page numbers in this. And just perhaps in the future, we could, you know, I could jump easily between the three different mediums.
Yeah, these are, these are arranged by goal, by each goal. So you've got Goal One there, Goal Two, which is rigorous curriculum. But there's several strategic strategies under each one of those goals. And you can see that they're listed here. But again, to go through each one of these line item by line item.
Wow.
John, refresh me a little bit. When this was created, what was the time period it was supposed to essentially look forward to? Or what was envisioned of how far forward it was gonna look? And then at what point was there any discussion of saying, oh, when we get to this point, we're gonna put some groups back together and revisit where we're at and adjust, modify?
Strategic plans, and this is the second one that I've been involved with, strategic plans are generally developed for 10 years, 10-year period of time. But before you get to the end of that 10 years, you want to start looking at the next process. So typically, this is not a, you know, a quick six-month process. I mean, this one here took us probably two years to develop, you know, correctly and fully. So it's something you want to start engaging the public in well before that 10-year period is up. So, you know, in an eight-year period is when you want to really start looking at, do we want to start reassessing this and do we want to start involving the community in the next strategic planning process? So typically, they're a 10-year plan.
What was the date this took effect per se or when it was, you know, the actual publication?
Oh, you would ask me that.
2009?
2009.
Was it 2009 when we completed it? Because I know we started it before that. Because I sat on a lot of those committees. So 2009 is when it really went into effect and was completed. But we started the process, I think, back in '07. So again, it's a, it's a process you really want to well-think out and make sure that you get all the stakeholders on buy-in and involvement in it. So, and that takes time.
Laura's gonna bring down copies of the original strategic plan so that we can maybe identify some of the items that are outstanding.
Yeah.
And talk about that today, too.
So you're about halfway through the strategic plan.
I'm sure you'll be halfway through.
And you can see a lot of things that have been accomplished and are continuing to be addressed. There's a lot of things in front of the board. You know, when you say international baccalaureate, that could be expanded or DI for that matter or any other programming, you know, where's the next steps in that? Because, again, that's, that's an overview, that's a focus, that's a direction, but it's not the individual steps to get there. So as you look at dual immersion or as you look at IB, what are the next steps that you foresee taking as a district? For example, one of the things we're looking at right now, PYP is a possibility, you know. I don't know if that's a direction or a step we want to take or not, but that's just one example of a, of a step. Dual immersion, there's a lot of, you know, you guys have had a lot of communication and input regarding the direction or the next steps you want to take in that initiative. So there's, there's a lot of things on the table that, again, it's kind of, okay, we've done this, what is the next step that we want to take, which direction do we want to go? Is it a DP program and a PYP program? You know, so those are ongoing, constant conversations that we're having around the strategic plan. This is, this is the overall guiding document for the issue.
Does anybody recall the last update we had, it was last year, I believe?
Yep. And you went through all of it, line item by line item, and the stuff that's in the green and orange areas. The blue is what's been added since your last update.
We had a meeting on that, I want to say it was even the beginning of this year or end of last year.
Boy.
That was last year.
I want to say end of last year. You guys went through that, like I said, line item by line item. So, you know, real quickly, if we look at this, we scroll down through this, if I have control here.
Catherine, while you're looking, Catherine has it.
I can wait till after if John's got something to say.
You're up next.
So as you look at the original strategic plan, again, those black areas are listed right here on the strategies. So you can see where those black areas are listed out. So 1.3 is right here, 1.3, that's one of the strategies. And then these are the steps that have been taken underneath that strategy. So all of them have been addressed to some extent. There isn't anything that we're not working on?
Anyone else want a copy of this? I have one.
So as you can see here, 1.3, 1.4, 1.5, they all have definite steps that were taken under each one of those strategies.
So really, so in short, John, for example, Goal Number One?
Yep.
Really, there's not a lot of outstanding projects here, would you say? I mean, everything's been addressed. I know it's a continual, continual work.
One of the things you'll see is that, you know, we are continuing down these paths. So, PYP at a high school. And a team to develop DP conferences beginning in 2009, 2010. We kind of did that, you know, and right now, the direction is taking a little different direction. So I don't know if the next, the next step is more the PYP than the DP. So that's district-wide, IB Coordinator and Director of Curriculum, our planning for training for feasibility, sustainability for primary years program. So that's, that's still ongoing, you know, and we're still looking at, you know, the certification for IB. We're getting real close to middle school for NYPD, so where do we go next with that? These things are ongoing. This is, this is, a lot of this stuff is pretty open-ended. Again, the stuff in blue is reported backwards by the buildings, what they're currently doing under each one of those strategies. We just had a report out, you know, we talked about college applications programs and so forth. We just had a report out at the last Admin Council from Millie Reedy regarding what she's doing as a new college and career counselor at the high school and the steps that she's taking towards this strategy. So some of that is parent education. Also, she's developed a matrix to help people understand, you know, what's the best fit for their student, how to look at, you know, different things such as income, grades, SAT scores, how that all compiles and creates a profile for the student in selecting different colleges, where they might want to go, making sure that everybody fills out applications, using the Naviance programming, all that. And those are, again, ongoing.
Oh, thank you, Catherine.
Well, going through this presentation and kind of going back to, I think this was the update from last year that I have, it's, you know, we've definitely come a long way because you can see that a lot of these things, you know, have already been fulfilled, they're in progress, and we're working towards them. But what I, and Steve brought this up, what I'm interested in, what's left of the plan and how we're gonna prioritize, you know, what's, what's left? You know, what's the district gonna be working on? And is what's left, is it still relevant, I guess? You know, like Don said, does it need to be modified? Do we need to add some new things to it that are new strategies towards the goals?
We haven't added any new strategies, but we're constantly adding new steps, so...
Right, so maybe new steps, new strategies, but maybe there's some things in there that were put in there, you know, four years ago, like, you know, this doesn't, this isn't really where we're going with the school right now, and maybe they should be eliminated. You know, we can do that.
And the strategy may not be irrelevant, but some of the steps that we take, I mean, we learn from some of the steps we take, backup and maybe go a different direction.
Right, so maybe the steps under the strategy.
And a lot of that has to do with communication and ongoing conversations that you're having with your public, you know, with your staff, and which direction you want to go now with that strategy. So, again, it's an ongoing thing. I don't think you ever really reach perfection. I don't think you ever really complete this. I mean, it's a, I think it's an ongoing goal in moving that direction. It's, you never really get there, you're always trying to make it better. You never reach that, okay, we're, we're there, we've, we've got this dialed in and we're perfect. It's always, how do we make it better? How do we improve it?
Right, I couldn't agree with you more. And to have that conversation, if you go through what's left and do we add, do we delete, do we modify? But going through it myself, because I kind of went through with things that I kind of circled on the old document, and it seems like one area that we started talking about last year in some workshops, well, there's a couple of areas. The first one that I came to was under the rigorous curriculum. We started talking about last year and then it didn't...
So Goal Two?
This was Goal Two and it's under Strategy Number Four, the GATE. And actually, it's Strategy, it's under Strategy Three and Four. There's a couple of things, there's, there's AVID there and there's GATE. And the GATE strategy is to ensure GATE students across the district receive equitable resources to meet their unique learning needs and fulfill their potential. And we started talking about that last year. Does our district, for this group of students, which is also a special, are we doing as much that we can, the most that we can for these students? When we started, are there enough opportunities for these students? And I know, you know, three, four years ago, there was a committee, GATE committee, and there's been some parents in the last year and the beginning of this year that have continued to ask me about that and about GATE and if that committee was ever going to...
Right.
...reconvene...
I used to sit on that, on that committee.
Yeah.
That, that has been broached, that committee's been reformed. I think Danny, I got ahold of her as a parent representative. That is mostly sitting right now in, what's her name, slipped me right now? You know, our person at Haley, uh...
Kristy Turco.
Kristy Turco. So, and as a parent, I've had two kids of my own in the GATE program. So Kristy is kind of at the lead of that. I don't know if they've scheduled any meetings yet, but I can double-check on that. I was, when I did serve on that committee, some of the things that we did broach was inequity issues across the schools.
Yeah.
People serving, you know, multiple schools as opposed to, so some had more service than others. The high school, for example, had a halftime GATE teacher but really wasn't serving halftime. They had been scheduled for other things, and so we broke that back out, made sure that Michael Sewell was truly halftime, just focused on GATE and not doing other things during that assignment. So there were things that were looked at at that point in time that we did broach, issues that we did broach. There are always, you know, things that we can do to improve that. And those recommendations should be coming out of that committee. But they have not met since last year, so...
Did they, was, the meetings were happening last year with that committee?
I was on those.
Okay. Okay, that was just one thing that seems to be left a little bit.
And Catherine, you know, AVID's still outstanding and something that, you know, hasn't been eliminated by no means, but...
Right. Right, that's what I was looking for, things that were left that need to be, as John says, discussed.
And I think in the summer, we're going to send, you know, exploratory team for some preliminary AVID training, just, you know...
We're still having those, we're still having those discussions. The AVID discussion is still ongoing in the Superintendent's Cabinet and Admin. So we are still having those discussions as to when are we gonna do the training? And what's that gonna cost? Who's going? All those kinds of things. You know, right now, we just got a, Tim got a grant through FTE, Train Teachers Through Technology, for example. So that's something that we've been discussing as well, is who's going? You know, that's coming out of funding from the, from the grant. And how many can we send? And what's it gonna, you know, so it's gonna be science math teachers? So that's under this rigorous curriculum as well. Those conversations are always ongoing. Again, always focused on the strategic plan and the strategies under the strategic plan. AVID definitely has come up and is still on the forefront of those discussions. But we haven't done anything, you know, towards it yet. So there haven't been, we haven't taken those steps yet, it's still in the discussion stage. And so you don't see it on your list here.
Right.
But it's definitely...
And quickly, if I'm wrong, but we as a board discussed AVID a little bit, too, on how we were gonna proceed with that. And we wanted to get our feet solidly implanted in the IB program before we jumped into AVID. I wanted to be set with...
You're, second of the bunch, John. We want, I mean, we have made a, we have made an effort at the board level to minimize new programs. You know, that was describing our teachers and administrators at the school level, not basically. So I think we've done a really good job of minimizing those new programs and doing what we're doing now really, really good. I think that's what you're referring to. And then, you know, and we'll move on in time. And when, we gotta have the buy-in and backing from staff. You know, and we don't want to overburden anything. I think we've done a really good job as a staff of minimizing new programs. But that can't stop us from moving ahead, either, so...
We want to use the strategic plan to create that unified vision across the whole district, between all our buildings, so that we're not heading eight different directions that we're all unified in the direction that we're, that we're moving in this map. And then, and then aligning our building improvement plan. So as we're looking at this at the building level, are we keeping this in the forefront of our vision as we're developing those plans, each individual building? So, you know, and we as a district have done that as well. We've also developed that plan, that improvement plan, again, keeping this in the forefront of our minds as we're moving forward. So, you know, some of the goals that are examples that are on the Y-S tool, you know, district will regularly reallocate resources to support school staff and instructional improvement. And then it goes down to the more granular pieces. The Superintendent's Advisory Cabinet reviews each school's continuous improvement plan to a degree, and to the degree possible, real allocates resources to meet the unique needs of individual buildings. So, you know, we're trying to align all of this. So as we are trying to make sure that the buildings have what they need in order to provide rigorous curriculum, whether it's PD, professional development, or resources, or any of those type of things, then we want to see their improvement plans and we want to make sure that we're getting what, to them what they need in order to fulfill those goals, towards these goals.
And Goal Number Two, I'm just curious, this is something that I just looked at here, the implementation of the Math Academy. But, can we go to that?
Sure.
2.2, 2.2 under Goal Number Two.
There is...
So that's an item that's outstanding, then?
Yep. Now, what's happened at the middle school, they've instituted a math program in the mornings prior to school where students who are kind of been selected from, you know, their group by abilities, by abilities, are invited to join the math program club, which is funded through the Education Foundation. So Fritz wrote a grant to the Education Foundation to hire Mark Gasanika to come in in the mornings and run a math club for some of those students that are in those upper math classes such as the algebra and geometry. My son takes advantage of that, you know, twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings before school. And it's been a real positive thing for him. So those kids actually got an invite from the principal by Amara to participate in that club. So again, that's a, that's an attempt to make sure that, that those kids get a little extra. What I want to, what I want to call that enhancement for their curriculum, for their current class curriculum. And the education foundation's been great in helping us with that. And a lot of your mileposts, that's what that's helping us with. A lot of your milepost funding is helping us provide those type of programs. There's also some after-school programs that are going on at the elementary programs or at the elementary levels at Haley, Bellevue. So, and I believe also Woodside. So they've instituted, so the buildings are telling us what their needs are. And then we're trying to align those needs based on, on these goals. So rather than, than just doing, again, dictating to them, they're telling us what their individual building needs are. So for example, the, the middle school needed to enhance some math instruction in the morning for their, for their very top kids. Give them a little extra. And at Woodside, they wanted more remedial type programs in reading. And, and at Bellevue, I believe it was math after-school instruction. So we've been able to kind of meet those individual needs of the buildings. Mike?
Even at Haley Elementary, we have a program in place too, for those kids that are not at the basic level of the ISAT scores yet. And that they have a hard time participating in the after-school program. What would be allowed, Mr. Bailey to do is to go in and hire a part-time substitute to go in and identify those kids and pull a lot of their regular classrooms to get them one-on-one instructions throughout the day, which is going to help.
I'm just curious, and this might be a question for, for Molly. Through K through five. You know, we had talked about it at some point, the strategy one for the goal number three is students receive structured language and cultural programs K through five. And a lot of after-school programs had kind of popped up for Spanish. Are those, and they were very popular in the beginning, are those still popular? And are they still happening?
Well, we just, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say that I actually am not the person that could answer that question the best.
Well, again, that was funded a lot through the Blaine County Education Foundation, what they like, the after-school.
The education foundation funded one of the programs at Hamillway last year. It's not funded this year at all because of the lack of participation.
Mike? Lack of participation last year?
Last, lack of participation last year. But this year, and actually for the last several years, the focus on the after-school programs are on those lower achieving students to try to get them up to the grade level. That's where we've been focusing on those after-school programs for an hour a day, four days a week, is those lower achieving students.
Yeah, I was just kind of looking at goal number three too, Catherine.
And that would be another one that, things that are left within that goal to start talking about again and start communicating about and figure out, okay, what's our priorities? What are we going to work on?
But in three, there's been a lot accomplished, a lot, a lot of things accomplished. I noticed, you know, goal number three.
Yeah, you know, now that we have language in the middle school, it's huge. For all students to take a year of language, I mean, and a lot of other things.
And as, depending on what we do with IB and then that, what kind of could possibly change upon it. You know, that, that our middle schools and high schools, any of those.
Oh, yes. Absolutely.
I, I kind of think the next step on this really, I'll, I'll pick an easy, one of, one of the easy categories, which is say, safety and security, goal number eight. As I look through this, it looks like most of this has been completed. And I don't know if it's possible to take some of these goals and get a couple of administrators together, like, let's say for goal eight, it seems pretty simple. Get Hallie and Scott Manning and a couple of people together and look at it and say, yeah, this is done, this is done, this is done. Maybe we still need to work on that. That's something the board needs to talk about. And you can really try to narrow this down a little bit, the focus and the scope of what we're looking at. Because I do see a lot in here, and that's an easy one to point out because it is very tangible. Let's see, door hardware. Door hardware's been completed, it's been installed, we're done, okay. Are we done with that? Or is there something else that needs to happen with it? What's the recommendation? Kind of, I have this other document I refer to pretty often, which is this programs and staff committee recommendations. And it's urgent, most urgent, it's categorized, moderate urgencies. And it just kind of breaks all the topics into one of those categories to give the board an idea of what's on the front burner, what's still trying to figure out a little bit, what's done.
So do you prefer the breakdown of, of these goals or the things that have been done in that, in that way?
Yeah, I would like to see it that way. I think this is great. This is kind of showing what's been done. These are the results. What's, what's occurred, what's happened. Next, I think we need to take what's been done and make some decisions on what's the next step. Or is there not a next step? Or that's up to the board to decide. You know, and really try to bring in a little bit, because as Catherine said, there's, yeah, there's a couple of things that we haven't done. Where are we at with that? Really narrow it a little bit. I think this is great because this does show that this hasn't been sitting on a shelf. It's being acted upon. Because a lot of these get put together and then they get put away and you never see it again. But there's results happening in all these categories. I think now we've just got to kind of bring it in a little bit.
It'd be nice too, I think, to identify if possible, you know, what, what the budget is for some of these outstanding issues are too. You know, and so that we can kind of get, get a feel for that. And specifically on, you know, on the, on the lead goals, those three goals. You know, it'd be nice to see what, I know what was done, but what still needs to be done in the budget item, catch that.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's, that's probably the next logical step we need to do. But, you know, if you look back into some of these goals as well, like, for example, on the GATE, there was one, there was a recommendation to go from one FTE in the elementary school to 1.5 FTE. And I know we have not done that yet, but there's a cost associated with that, with doing that. And I know that, it seems like that there was a lot of different areas in the technology department about additional positions within the school district were going to be needed over the course of the next years. That would also need to have budget impacts as well. So that's probably the next logical thing that we should be doing as a district, is looking at those things that have not been completed and saying, board, we are going to be still doing this and here's a cost that's going to be associated with these.
That'd be great. And. I'm sorry, can I pause my training for a second, please?
There was a question from the audience.
Upward.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted a point of clarification on the, the, like, an accelerated math program? It's only offered before school or, or GATE, GATE is, is a little bit understaffed, it sounds like? So the program is quite not as, not as deeped up in each, at each school? So you provided this other before-school thing, is that correct?
That's some of the concern. For example, because of the North Valley and South Valley, sometimes down here, you have people that can serve multiple buildings where in the North Valley, it's really tough. If you're serving Hemingway, it's tough to get clear down here and serve another building. So they tend to get a little more staffing than, than Haley and Bellevue, who share some staff. And so the question is, you know, what comes up with, with teachers a lot of times is inequity. How come Hemingway's getting a full-time FTE and we're sharing one? So we get a half and they get a whole. And so it becomes that, the haves and the have-nots. You know, and then you have to assess, well, what's, is it being effective? Is it not being effective? Can, can the person down here serve two buildings effectively? If not, do we, you know, need to look at that? That, that impacts staffing, which impacts budgeting. So those are all conversations that are ongoing.
And the before-school math program, is it well, do kids show up for that? Because my children would have a real hard time going before school.
Well, it's only been running for a few weeks now. I think, I think we're in our third week.
Okay.
So it just started. It, it hasn't been going very long. Because I, I'm just trying to remember back when my son got the letter. So, and his, his attendance has been a little sporadic because he's got to go in and see Miss Shafer on certain mornings because he's just got to get his Shafer fixed. So sometimes he'll skip the math thing because it is voluntary.
Yeah.
It's totally voluntary. So, and, and that's one of the issues, one of the things we're looking at and the education foundation is, is monitoring, is at that time, is it effective? At seven o'clock in the morning, are students attending? What is the attendance? We don't really have those numbers yet. We just got it started. So I don't know how effective it's being.
Okay. And also just looking at developmentally, the age of students who are in middle and high school and their sleep needs, et cetera. An early morning program is something, I think, to consider.
And I, and I may have, I may have spoken out of turn. I want to say, actually, it starts at 7:45. Because I took him the other morning, so it was 7:45.
My, my two kids are doing it and they catch the bus at Wells Fargo and catch them at 7:50 in the morning, the city bus. I bribe them with film ads at Hetherton prior to getting on the bus.
I was going to say, so it's not punitive?
It is, you know, it's, it's additional. They don't have to do it, but try to make the best of it.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I could get Miss Shafer to, to, to put herself in that room during that time, I bet I could increase the.
Thank you.
I think I'm going to just have ourselves in the back a little bit here. And that, I mean, we have done a significant amount of work, our staff, you know, and, and teachers. And during that time, it really helped, we haven't, you know, we've held the budget. We haven't seen a big, huge increases in budget and we haven't seen big, huge increases in staff either. So what that means is everyone's, you know, we're, we're doing the, a lot more work with the same amount of resources. So people are working harder. And I think the board recognizes that. Having helped and, you know, we, we thank everyone for their hard work.
Question for the board, because, you know, when we have these report outs, a lot of times, you know, we're trying new formats as well to, to see, you know, what, how the board prefers getting the information. So I'm, I'm hearing some, some things that, that you preferred the information the way it was presented maybe before in, in categories of urgency. I'm, I'm just kind of, what would help me is to know exactly how the board prefers the format of the presentations so that it flows better for you guys, so that you're understanding the information better. I mean, this is more of a, this is what's been done, this is what's currently being done. But if you're asking for something a little different than that, some direction from you would be great. And I could help meet that.
Don?
I'd like to see a document that would have some recommendations in it. And it certainly doesn't have to be that, that individual making a decision for the board, but maybe recommendations that the board consider, you know, pursuing this, adjusting this, modifying each of those goals. I guess a recommend, a recommending document.
And would you like that to come from the admin council, the superintendent's cabinet, the, you know, the building support teams? And where would you want that information to come from? And how, what level do you want to see it from?
I'll leave that up to Lani, to you guys to figure it out, which way to get it in. Or how to break it up, I guess, you know, where it's coming from. I think it's got to start at the bottom. It'll look its way up to you guys.
And along with that, with the recommendations, possibly, does Mike discuss what that's going to entail budgetary-wise?
I have that.
Jump into something, we're, we're knowing what we're jumping into rather than just jumping by them.
And, you know, in our board goals, you know, we've addressed that. And at work sessions like we're doing today, and there's just so much, those work sessions are invaluable, these, these events. In our board goals, we, I think we thought that we might be reviewing these, the strategic plan more often. Things happen and we wind up, you know, going over other programs and subject matter issues. But after looking at this, it might be a, a good idea, John, that we just go back to those board goals and maybe refocus again on the strategic plan at a work session or two or three throughout the year.
Well, I can say, there's very little that happens or that goes on that isn't focused on the strategic plan. I mean, all our admin councils, all our superintendent's cabinet meetings, they're all focused, you know, with the strategic plan at the forefront of that. Whether it's developing the, the district improvement plan, building improvement plans. All the work that we're doing is around the strategic plan. And so it's, like Dawn pointed out, this is not a shelf document. This is, this is the marching orders that, that our community has given us and we take it very seriously. And it's always at the front of what we're doing. So you'll see that a lot of the movements that, that we're exploring, whether it's AVID, whether it's IB, whether it's DI, all those programmings that, that we're looking into link directly to the strategic plan. There's very little we're out there on a tangent away from this. So we try to keep things focused.
What would the board prefer? I mean, would you like this to come, come during a regularly scheduled meeting? You know, section it out and then review outstanding issues and budgetary items? Or would it be better to, you know, do these, work through this at a work session? Is there any preference there?
Okay, well, two, two things. First, to answer John's question. I think this format is, is fine if it had an extra section like Heather was talking about, about what's left. And it's kind of combining everything. Okay, what's left? How much are those things going to cost? You know, like Steve was adding, so there's a, so there's a, there's a, a number to what's left. And then there's also the, the recommendations of those, of what's left. And maybe it's not everything, because maybe it's prioritizing four things and then there's recommendations on those things. And kind of combining everybody, even what Dawn said. And where would you like that information to come from? It's probably from, you know, kind of community up. And, you know, building administrators can go to their teachers, can go to their parents and help, you know, get some input. And it, it doesn't have to be, you know, really formal, but it can, they can discuss it at staff meetings or PTA meetings or, or whatnot. So that's what I would like to see. And, you know, that could probably be brought up at a meeting. It could be under superintendent's report. It doesn't have to be, you know, a huge elaborate report, but because we've done this, we've looked at it. I liked getting this beforehand because I could read through all 72 pages and look at what's done, which has been a huge amount. Which has been great. And like I say, it's not a document that's put, been put on the shelf and that's clear. But it could be, okay, we had our workshop, here's an update, this is what's left. So it could be over several meetings.
Oh, definitely will, yeah. Paul?
Well, I'm, I'm agreeing with Catherine, agreed with Dawn, agreed with Heather. I'm, I'm wondering if, if, I mean, the, this, this document that, that we have here, I mean, really itemizes the detail of everything that's going on in a timeline. And I think that that's great. But I'm wondering if, to, if we were to bite these off one or two at a time, to just begin with a narrative account of, of progress and then try to determine what the, what the questions are, what direction we're going in. But, but I, I think in a narrative type format, well, we can gain a sense of success without, I mean, we can use this as research.
So rather than seeing all 10 goals, maybe one at a time or two at a time?
Well, yeah.
That's all the core goals are structured.
Yeah.
So it's, does it sound, sounds to me like you're looking for some sort of executive summary or summary? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, and we can use this as, 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 as research. We can ask questions from that. But, I mean, to, you know, it takes 15 minutes to go over, say, safety and security. And really, you know, you could probably summarize it in five sentences. You know, this is done, this is done, this is done. We've executed virtually everything and we have this left to do.
And we spent this much amount of money and this is what's left.
Yeah.
Among those ones.
So I, I'm hearing a sense, because there are, there are strategies that we've done a lot, a lot in. I mean, extensive amount of work in and others that we've just started to scratch the surface. I don't think there's anything that we haven't addressed, but some of it has, has been far more addressed than others. So I'm, I'm getting a sense from the board that you really want to know, you know, how far we've gotten in certain areas and with a particular view on those that we haven't gotten very far on, what's left, that piece of what's left. The number of those things that we haven't gone extensively into and the prioritization of what comes next in there. So am I, am I hearing that correctly?
And I'd say on the ones where you can say, truly say completed, say completed. So we kind of can move that to one side.
And I can see that more with the, with the security.
Yeah.
Even though, even with security, your cameras become outdated and all that. But, but for the most part, that's, that's a hard tangible thing, like you said, Don.
What's left? You got all the low-hanging fruit or is there anything left?
With the educational pieces, those are, those are in constant metamorphosis, so.
Sure.
Well, and then, you know, and then like the technology. Well, and then, you know, and then, like, the technology piece, you know, tying, uh, tying numbers to it. We've done a fabulous and incredible job to this point, but, you know, where are we financially in this? We know, we have X amount that we have allocated, are we in a very comfortable zone? We've kind of created this situation that needs feeding and are we on a, are we on a good track to continue, continue growing it, um, and doing it safely?
So sustainability?
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we just, can we just kinda move on to each of these goals, just take a brief look at the original, um, strategies? Just see if anything pops out.
What do you wanna go back to?
Uh, goal number four.
Okay.
And I, I, I like this open discussion and I think it's gonna give staff an opportunity to provide what we're looking for. We didn't, we didn't give you enough direction, John.
Well, no, I mean, this, this is a fairly expansive document, I mean, um, I'm a little unprepared as, you know, Lonnie was expecting to be back today, he's, he's not.
Oh, you're doing great.
But this is a, this is a very extensive document, I mean, it's pretty thick and pretty, pretty wordy, so to get through it in a session is, I, I, I understand what Paul's saying, if we can take this one piece at a time and kinda get a full grip of each goal individually, might be a better way to approach it. But the open communication from the board is very helpful in knowing, you know, what's the best way for you to get that information, fully understand it and make decisions regarding the next steps and where we wanna move as a district, so.
So, I mean, in goal number four, for, for example, 4.1, continue to find the whole child in this community, that's very open-ended. And I don't know if you could ever bring closure to that, you know?
Which one's one?
That's 4.1.
Whole child.
That's ongoing, yeah.
So I'm wondering with one like this, if it might be helpful for the board if you summarize things. For instance, we have 132 ongoing activities at the elementary level encompassing music, dance, la da da, and at the middle school, we have these things happening during the day, we have 17 other school programs, all about the whole child. Is, would that be helpful for you to, um, sorry, would that be helpful for you to, um, to have a clearer understanding?
You're getting a lot of head shaken, so.
10-5.
Yeah.
I think that's where that narrative comes in, Paul's probably about that. Tells us, is, is there still a, an urgent need there or are we, are we kinda there?
Right.
Are we still looking at it and reevaluating?
I think if we summarize some of that and put that data all together in one piece, I think you might be surprised at just how much we do. And it might tell us, you know what, we'll always be looking for new opportunities, but maybe we have met the goal.
You know, Fritz addressed that in, at some level, you know, he, his committee did that, what was the committee called, Mike? That's it.
Programs audit.
Yeah, the programs audit.
Travel with this stuff.
And, uh, I think that addressed some of what you're saying, yeah, but I like, I mean, more information is always better, you know?
But there are, there are programs coming to us all the time that we institute that are good for the whole child. For, for example, the WOW project that Morrie Golden brought forward to the district, um, and what he's doing, um, community-wide, um, at all the schools, you know, those are partnerships that are, that are, you know, we just entered into some of those, um, there's, there's, we're always having those communications with, with the community on, on, you know, groups coming forward saying that they can help us in these things, the Flourish Foundation, all those things that, that come to us, um, on a constant basis. So we're always looking to expand. It's, it's never done, so to speak, but we do do a lot.
And that's one, it's hard, you would have a hard time concluding.
Yeah, it's a hard one to hear.
Jerry?
I just also, um, want to remain focused on actually what is best for students. Um, the program and staffing, great document, however, it's written by administrators and teachers. Um, you know, I bet if you talk to students about that, it'd probably be flip flopped, because they, you know, for them, transportation, they're resilient, you know? Um, so many things that are in those documents, we, we have to focus on who wrote them. I want you guys, as your biggest items, when you're looking at things, is what are the kids getting out of these programs? Is Skyward still worth it? Are we taking too much time from a teacher who could be helping a student after school because they have to put all this information into Skyward? Is it really communicating with the parents? And by the time the parents, you know, do look at Skyward, a lot of times it says missing assignment and the teacher goes, oh yeah, I'm sorry, I haven't gotten to it yet. So, you know, with all of these programs, if we do list them, think about what the child's getting out of it. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Always.
Can I ask what document you were referencing?
Program and staffing, we have that red, the big red job up there that's talking about DI.
Be sure, Jerry and, you know, and entire community, everything that we do behind this table focuses on what's best for kids.
I know, and I'm sorry to remind you, I'm sure that's always in your head.
That is our mission and even, but there are times when it doesn't seem like, I mean, when we're, when propane's on the consent agenda or I mean, there's business items.
You gotta keep them warm.
Yeah.
Where'd that come from?
There are business items that we have to address and take care of, but they're always, it's always on behalf of our students. No, no matter, no matter.
And just one more item in the thought of kindergarten, um, the other countries that are doing really well have a test for kids to get into kindergarten. We're a model school district, we might wanna consider that, because age differences, I find, are huge. That's where you get, you know, students that they can be the same, but six months different, will take one kid to gate and the other kid's normal. So, um, you know, a test to get into kindergarten may get some of these discrepancies out of the way, just a thought for a model school district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would be careful with that. Education is right in the United States, unlike European countries, um, people have a right to that education, um, starting at that kindergarten age, and if you're gonna deny that right to people, be ready.
We're always ready, John. Well, we'd like to pick some. Thanks, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, um.
That again, we're jumping back and forth and that would be perfect for, you know, goal two or goal one. As, as a point of discussion, I mean, a pre-K, I mean, pre-K is optional here, you know, that's something, if this is a test that actually helps children achieve, you know, then needs to be something to talk about, you know, maybe a short conversation may go on forever, but it, uh, if, if again, the goal is to, uh, to educate our children to our utmost ability, if that's part of it, that's part of it.
Can we move on to goal five, Lori? I think this is something that the district and our entire community has done a tremendous job at is we have incredible kids in our community and, uh, I think they're very tolerant, compassionate, um, just, they're good humans, you know, and, uh, I wish that, I think, if you strike up a conversation with a, with a student or a child in our community, it's amazing. So many people are, are avoid that, but, um, it's, it's impressive, the discussion you can get out of our, one of our kids here, um, you know, right? I think, I think you agree, Paul.
I was just gonna say, wins breakfast.
Yeah, but, you know, I saw that in, uh, 5.1 and, uh,
Well, you got to see a great example of that, um, at homecoming this year.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
With, um, one of our special ed students who was, um, in a very positive way. You know, other schools, that's going negative, it's been a joke, it's been trying to target kids with disabilities, and here it was viewed exactly the opposite and heralded, so. And I don't know if you, if you went to Nathan's, um, senior project fundraiser, but it was, I mean, you couldn't walk through the place, it was so crowded. It was quite a community event. So not, not just our, our kids in the school, but our community as a whole, um, really embraces diversity and differences and celebrates it.
Yeah, and it comes back to, schools can't do alone.
Nope.
Right? And, uh, I'm, I'm proud of what people do. So I think, you know, uh, goal five, there's lots to be accomplished and that's open-ended too, and I don't know how you could ever bring closure to something, something like that, that's just ongoing. Can you move on to six, Lori? Uh, we actively recruit, retain and develop high com- competent, caring and student-focused staff. John, that's, that's your arena and you've done a tremendous job with that, yeah?
Um, and, uh, you know, with, with the economy, I mean, we've had, uh, it's been kinda nice, you know, in, in some ways, as an employer, you know, I have a position open right now in my office and I have 63 applications to go through that are complete, so, um, I can tell you that there's no lack of highly qualified folks out there. But what we're, what we're looking for is that personal piece, we're looking for that, uh, you know, people that are, are really caring and student-focused, not just competent in their area of academics, but have that piece, and that's the hardest piece to really get around, so, um, you know, we do a lot of our, almost all of our hiring by committee and try to get as, as many people around that table to give, um, that input, uh, that, you know, that perception that I may not have, someone else may be able to lend you the conversation and pick up something that I may have missed. So I think we do a really good job of making sure that we screen our applications really well and to make sure that, uh, we not only follow the process, but that we're looking for people that are a good fit for the district and exhibit all the characteristics that we're expecting from our students.
And, you know, here's an example too, uh, you know, can you, 6.3, continue to develop teacher-staff housing options, affordable housing? You know, that's changed significantly.
It has, it has changed significantly.
So, that's something.
I'm not sure it's brought away.
Right, and it, not that, say, it could come back, right, might have the same issues, you know?
6.3 in which goal? Six.
It's six.
Okay, then we go to decision point seven.
But when the strategic plan was written, that was a, that was a major issue.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And that's, again, back to that, that, you know, it's, it's about assessing, monitoring and always looking back at, is that as relevant now as when it was written? Whether, what things have changed, what things have taken place, what movements in education are happening, how do we even monitor it?
Anybody else have anything on both sets?
No, just, John, I, I, I agree with you, I think you guys do a great job and all the staff, guide that, our student focus. Really, you know, I'm more impressed every day when I meet people, how concerned and how hardworking they are. And that goes all the way down from, from the top, all the way down, all, all the issues.
Yeah, Paul?
Um, uh, on the same lines as the, uh, uh, helping, helping with, uh, with, with housing, you know, the, the district instituted, uh, uh, financial support of new hires, helping, helping rent, rent subsidies. Um, as the, uh, as the other situation has changed, I wonder if that has changed, uh, has, has anything been done to, to look at that again and see if it's still a, a valid model of, of how to spend our money and retain, retain staff?
Yeah, we, we, um, stopped that a year ago.
Is it gone? Oh, completely?
And, you know, the people were in, or, you know, they're being phased out.
Okay.
Because of the change.
I probably put it in there.
All right.
Thank you. Again, a great example of.
And to speak to that, just real quick, Paul, one thing that I'm seeing that I did not see in the past when I first came into the position is it was really hard to recruit, um, teachers from other, other districts in Idaho, just because of the cost of living. You know, I have people 15, 20 years experience, but they couldn't move up here, even with the higher salaries, because of the housing costs. We're seeing those people now. Well, you know, um, we're, we're starting to see teachers out of, um, within the state who are applying, you know, here and taking jobs in Blaine County that have not in the past, you know, so, starting to hire people, good people from other districts.
Right. Anything for John, for staff on seven? That's moving at lightning speeds, I mean, we're, we're lots to be done in technology. But there's a lot to be done. That's, I think that's one category, actually, that we need to spend some time on.
And as I mentioned, you know, Tim got a grant for the FTEC, which is Future Technology Education Conference. Um, we're taking a lot of middle school, um, and high school teachers in math and science to that, to see how technology can be applied in those subject matters within the classroom and what's the most effective way to, um, deliver that. That's something.
And that was one of the levy goals, uh, that we, I think, Mike, we, that'd be really nice to know, you know, where we, where we stand.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
John?
I'd just like to say, I really like how the teachers are able to put forth grants and, and get the technology that, that they see that they could use in their classrooms, rather than us forcing it down. It, it's really on the ground to, to help the teachers and, and their teaching style, their students, it's tailored to, and I really appreciate it.
We, we've learned from on the space.
Paul?
One of the things I've heard from pretty much every strata in the district is that, um, the professional development associated with maximizing some of this technology has, has not come as quickly as the iPads and the whiteboards have, and that, you know, unless we, unless we have a good training program, uh, those things sit in the classroom and are not, are not used as well as they could be.
Could I just speak, I, I was invited to teach at the Techtoberfest the district had, and I taught five sessions of, sorry, I don't, I'm not used to these. Five sessions of 90 minutes each session, and I worked with the teachers across the school and the, the teachers who were invited to participate as well, who weren't in this school district. And the overwhelming comment was, more training, more training. Um, and the, and the iPad, and also I will say, just from a parent's perspective, I've noted that, um, the grant system is wonderful, but there's an, an equitability issue in my mind as a parent, because my son is in a class whose grant wasn't accepted, so he doesn't have an iPad to work with in his class. Now, I, I supplement at home and I'm a little bit of a techie, so I do some of that stuff at home with him, but other children don't necessarily get that exposure, um, and so just a point, um, for you to consider. But that, the Techtoberfest was amazing and it was wonderful to be involved and the teachers are just so ready to, to learn more and to be able to use it. They need the tools.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I know what you're saying about some, some classes not having, uh, perhaps the, the same, uh, technology fix that others have gotten, but in my experience, most teachers are, are spreading it as far as they can, knowing that, knowing that every kid deserves that exposure. And I see a lot of that, you know, I mean, I, I know one teacher who, uh, was not part of, or didn't either, their grant wasn't accepted, they didn't, uh, apply, but they saw, gosh, look, fifth grade's got a class set of iPads. Their administrator gave them several iPads. They go, well, okay, we're gonna split this up amongst our whole team, we'll collect them together when we need to. So we're gonna say, every class, all, all the classes in our grade are gonna have two of them. And there were two left over, it wasn't an even number, they gave those to special ed teachers.
That's great.
Because they saw the value and the need, and so I think that there's a tremendous amount of, of sharing and giving that may not be quite so visible. I, you know, if, if there are kids that are dropping, dropping through the cracks, that's not acceptable, but.
Well, I think it's a process too, and, and iPads are new, relatively new.
Yeah.
So we all have to be patient and, and, not so much, but three years new.
Yeah.
But, and that's another point about these goals with technology is, really, um, setting a goal to be current would be something that I would like to see, because it changes so quickly and that's almost impossible to do in a private home, yet alone a public school, so.
Well, I was just gonna point out, like, Elisa, if you do look at the goal, it is, we put into practice current state-of-the-art technology, that's the, that's the ultimate goal, but, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Well, one of the, you know, one of the discussions we had at the state level was, why are, why are you pushing laptops on us when that might not be the most current, relevant piece of, of, of hardware that, that children wanna put their hands on? We didn't get much traction with that, but, um, in Blaine County, we know that, that that's five years behind the curve and, and unfortunately, in education, sometimes that's where they, they think at the legislative level. However, as far as grants and so forth, one of the things we learned from that was However, as far as grants and so forth, one of the things we learned from that was that, you know, as a principle, we were pushing out, um, smart boards years ago, you know, from that, that movement. So I had these smart boards put out in all my classrooms, all these teachers, and half of them just became chalkboards. They just became whiteboards. And so here's this $5,000 piece of equipment that's being used as a chalkboard. I mean, what's the point? So if the teachers aren't ready for the technology, then you're spending money recklessly. And so one of the issues with the grants is to have teachers pull the technology rather than us pushing it on them. And so when they feel ready or when they feel something that they're excited about, they're much more likely to, um, embed it in their, in their, um, curriculum than if we just give them all this hardware and then they don't know how to use it. The training has been huge. Teachers are, are screaming for more PD, absolutely, because technology's coming at us so fast and how do we get trained on it? Um, I use it every day and I still have to go to my, you know, 14-year-old to figure out some of the things I use on a daily basis. Um, but it's also, you know, in looking over those grants, some people wrote those grants too without, they just wanted the toys, they wanted the hardware, but they really didn't have a plan in place as to how they were going to integrate it into the classroom environment and into the curriculum. That takes PD. That, that takes some serious PD. Now, on the other side of that, we recognize that, um, thus Techtoberfest, thus the movements that were trying to, you know, take initiatives in, in the state. I mean, uh, that was recognized statewide, that training. So, you know, I want you to know that Blaine County is on the cutting edge of trying to make sure that we get that kind of training, going out and finding people in the community that have the expertise, that can help us out, those kind of things. Do we need more of it? Absolutely, absolutely. I, I hear you're having a clear. But those are things that are in the forefront. They are in our focus and, and, you know, we know we need to move those directions, absolutely.
I think we talked about eight already. Can we just move on to nine? And, uh. Uh, facilities, grounds and classrooms promote sustainability and provide for optional learning. Obviously, we've been a lot of, uh, work accomplished on that goal. And then, uh, unless there's any comment, I'll, John?
On that, I really appreciate the building capacities being on there to see where we're at, see where we have room for growth and where we're kind of maxed out.
I know I'm really impressed with Mike and Howie and how, while they work together and keeping this on the forefront of their focus. Um, I know I met with Howie and, um, who's the Goldman guy, what's her first name? Catherine Goldman on, you know, on pesticides and that kind of stuff. And it's amazing what we're doing. I mean, it's, it's incredible how on top of that, that Howie is and how much research he's done, not only in grounds, but also within the buildings, um, the chemicals that we use daily inside the buildings and making sure that those are, um, non-toxic as, as possible. You know, whether it's pest control from mice or anything like that to clean floors, wax and all those kind of things. And Howie's brilliant about that stuff, so I've, I've been very impressed.
You know, air quality.
Air quality.
We're very, great work. It's not that way in the rest of our country. I've just recently read.
No.
Pretty great.
If you want to see a real stark reality of the difference of Blaine County and, and a lot of the rest of the state, go over to Kerry and you drive on down the road to it.
So, goal number 10, to enrich our children's educational experience, we utilize the resources of our community.
We're very involved with our community.
Yeah.
This one was about building, um, website bridges and that's all done, so we're just, you know, adding more, trying to get people to put things on the site.
I was just, uh, yeah, jumping out. Not, not a lot has changed, but it's just continual work, you know?
I would just like to, to make a comment and I don't know if this really falls under community resources, but I do feel in the last year to two years, all of our school websites, there's a lot more information that goes on there about the community and the schools. You know, a lot, you've worked with a lot of the schools on it and that's been great and I've really noticed that as a parent. So, thank you. And thank you, Debbie, for putting this together because it's really important.
So, you know, I think that, that great opportunity, great discussion, I think, today. And, uh, it was good just to revisit the plan and, and I think give staff some guidance on how we'd like to move on and, you know, gather additional information and spread it over the year. We'll figure that out as time moves on, but, uh, it's a good reminder that we need to stay focused on this strategic plan. Look at the budgetary issues and prioritize. Really, John, I think it was great. You did a great job. It was, I'm glad you didn't go through the entire document.
Wasn't fair to go through, might not have gone out on. But I did get some great, um, ideas from you guys here today. I took some really good notes. So, um, you know, in, in presenting this in the future, it's something that we want to make sure that we're constantly communicating, communicated back to the board, that this is a living, breathing, working document. It's always at the forefront of everything we do. We are always student-focused. Sometimes people don't see all the intricacies that go into that and may not understand it fully. But, um, everything we do, whether it's Skyward or whether it's the program and developing with the community, everything's focused. I mean, that's why we're all here. We're all here for kids. Without them, we're, we're out of work. You know, we're, we're, we all went into this for, for one reason and that's to help students and to help kids to be successful later on down the road and, and develop them all the way through. So at my heart, I spent 20 years in a classroom and that's still at the center of why I do what I do. And I know that's why you all volunteer your time so graciously is to keep students in the forefront. So this, this is good information for me to make sure that we're communicating as clear as we can with the board as to, um, how we're keeping this in the forefront and making sure that we're following the directions that have been laid out for us by our community.
ISBA had a recommendation. I think that, I'd like to take a look at that and implement it. It's actually, when we do our, make our agendas up for meetings, that we actually relate that line item, that agenda item back to the strategic plan. And that brings in our kids, that brings in the, you know, how that's related to our students and, and the strategic plan. So I'm going to, if there's no objection to that, I'm going to pay a little more attention to that. We can talk about that retreat, too. Paul?
Um, I, I agree with you, but I don't think that's the whole answer. If, if, if we come forward with an agenda item that doesn't relate back to the strategic plan, it shows where we are continuing to think and not living in the paradigm that is this plan that was created, you know, five, four years ago.
And we may need to add that item to the, you know, that's what you're, good to identify, I think, yeah.
Keep in mind, you've, you've got us working for you to make sure we keep that focus too. You know, and one thing that we've asked of schools is to keep that in the focus. So as we move to, to making sure that all schools do school improvement with a focus on the district and the, and the strategic plan.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
You can keep that if you want. I have a couple.
Thank you for all your help.
My very own. Thanks, Elise. It'll be attached in a minute, too.
She was awesome, by the way.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, that, that we're trying to make sure that that's all aligned, system-wide. That this, that this is at the forefront of everything we do and that as we write those, these, these things, as we go through the state, you know, requirements, we're making sure that we're not, um, doing work that isn't focused where we're already going. So, um, we're trying to make sure everything's aligned. So if the state's saying, you need to do this, then we're making sure we're going to do that with a focus and we're going to align it to this. We're not just going to do it to comply. We're going to do it so that it's a usable piece of work. You know, we're not just filling out reports needlessly, but that they're focused on the things that we want to accomplish as a district, so.
I think that's how you get so much accomplished, John. You know, that's exactly how you do it.
Devin's really helped me with that.
So again, thanks, Mike, John, Lori and, uh, board and I think I'll.
And public.
And public. If we lose our public?
We lost our public.
We have some public on it. Damn, I don't know. Uh, hopefully. So let's make a motion now to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks very much.
Thank you, board.